Thirty-six and we're gonna call it a wedding to order. Yeah, my first government. Uh, any visitors that who sign in, welcome. Thank you for being here. Uh, we will start with the land acknowledgement. Uh, all Spokane Public Library buildings sit on the traditional homeland of the four bands of the Spokane Tribe of Indians. Upper bands, middle band, lower band, and Chulila band. Since time immemorial, the Spokane Tribe of Indians that have lived and cared for these grounds, identifying themselves as flesh of the earth. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to their land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. Maybe we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship of the people of the Spokane tribe and to all those who share this land. All right, uh, first is the agenda, the any changes that need to be made. All right, then we will move forward with the agenda as it is. Uh, the first action item will be changes or an approval of the September Board Minute.
We need to move.
A second or move, whichever I couldn't hear. If one of those happened. But I'm happy to move for they approved as presented.
Second, over the board minute?
Yep.
The only thing I have, I do not change.
Okay.
It says Miss Hemingway moved to approve the motion. And it was Gary.
Which item?
For the approval of August.
August minutes. Thank you.
Judge.
Hey, I move to approve, uh, with the change as discussed.
Second. All right, well, in favor? Any opposed? All right, then the board minutes are approved. Uh, the next will be an approval of the September twenty twenty-four bills and contributions.
That we approve the September twenty twenty-four bills and contributions in the amount of one million, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. Uh, one hu- one million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-six cents.
All in favor? Hi, any opposed? All right, moving forward, uh, financial report from Nicole.
Thank you. Okay, so to start off with library operations for September of twenty twenty-four. For our cash and investments trend, uh, for September catch, our balance is five million, nine hundred ninety-one thousand, four hundred and forty-six. Um, that does allow the library to cover a hundred and nineteen days worth of operating costs. Uh, that balance also, it does include the reserve for capital for over one point four million and is net of encumbrances. Um, for this one is forty-seven thousand. For the operations expenditure trend for September, the total was one million, thirty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars. And seventy-four percent of that amount was for personnel costs. Capital books and materials were eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Our interfund charges, which do include third quarter, were forty-three thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. We also, we also purchased some annual software, um, for Dell servers in our Java, uh, connections agreement. That total came to twenty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six. Uh, we use capital improvement dollars for some additional engineering permits for the, uh, Nevada construction site. That operation amount was nineteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars. The other portion that was covered by the available bond dollars that was dedicated for that was twenty-two thousand, one hundred and one dollars. Um, and then our secure task, security guard, third, third-party charges for eighteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five. Any questions on operating? Here we go. So for the bond update for September, um, our expenditures that month, uh, totaled two hundred, two thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars. So we had for a hundred and forty-two, one seventy-one, included construction permits and A and E costs for the Nevada site. Again, twenty-two thousand, one oh one was the permit portion of that, which was split with with operations. Uh, the Shadle Park shed construction was paid for in full totaling thirty-one thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. Our A and E constructions and and construction, uh, professional services were paid for the amount totaling twenty-two thousand, one thirty-four. We also had some equipment charges for the STA twenty-four seven kiosk to rep, rep with that project, uh, that was six thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars. In September, we also did close out that that shadow shed project. Uh, this did not have any detainage requirements associated. The, uh, construction company that, that, that installed that was a third party through, through our contractor, the, the Ongan people. And then the greenhouse, uh, that is on order for the, uh, Nevada site is currently scheduled to arrive at the end of, of this month. So you'll look here if there's, um, a snapshot, Laura, as, as I promised you last month, just a, a quick snapshot of our public works projects that are currently open. So we're down to one active project, which is for the Nevada site. And then we have currently four in the status that is set for closure. The central one is for the staff furniture. Uh, the Indian Trail one was the landscaping project. See out here, it's beautiful. Um, the South Hill was for custom casework, so we're essentially waiting on, uh, letters to re-release retainage from the Department of Revenue for all three of those. Um, and then, oh, and for the five-mile kiosk, we're waiting on the Department of, uh, Revenue and L, uh, L and I letters. Uh, we can, we can take the job now. Uh, below that is another, just kind of a snapshot highlighting our overall budgets for every single project. And I did fold the one that we have remaining, so the Nevada side at the very top for just under one point eight million. So just kind of gives you a bird's eye view of how far we've come and we're, we're on the home stretch. Sounds pretty cool. Next page, here's just a snapshot, um, at, at those dollar amounts with what we've spent so far, just showing our encumbrance balance remaining at one million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, two ninety-one, which does tie to our cash. Uh, for business office updates, so October is the month for processing vacation sellback with staff. So this, uh, this year they have the option to sell maximum of two days of their vacation hours. Uh, that does get paid out the first paycheck of November. So, um, our, our, our inventory process for twenty twenty-four is still underway. Minnie Fong has been spending the last couple of weeks doing site visits. Um, she's making a lot of great, great progress on that. Uh, we're also in the process of renewing our insurance policies for twenty twenty-five. So I, I worked very closely with, uh, Tom Blue, he's our broker and VP at, at Hub International. Um, some news that, that we received last week was that our current insurance carrier would, will be increasing, um, our cost by twelve percent next year, while also lowering our umbrella rate from ten million to five million. So we're working on, on getting quotes with, with other vendors right now. Um, I will be bringing the insurance policy forward, uh, before the end of this year for, uh, board approval. Any questions about the, uh, bond or other updates?
I'd just like to say thank you for bringing back that public work table. It was nice to see it and understand how far we've come.
Betcha, I got your back.
Hi, everyone. I know that pigment of your imagination just magically appeared. Kenny, good job.
Yep, that, that.
Okay, so the chairman's report is going to be minimal, uh, from everything that I have seen and heard, it seems to be going very well. So unless any of you have anything other to compare, then you will continue with this. So, and, all right. Uh, written report is part of the package, so highlights, uh, we are moving forward with, uh, the thought exchange platform for our community engagement during our study process. This is a platform that Spokane Public Schools uses a lot with their community engagement as well. Um, so we really hope that this will really enhance our understanding of what the public is thinking and what they want from their library system. We've just done this big overhaul, so how can we continue to improve upon and, and do a better service for the public? And we can also use it for employment too. So you'll recall, we do a yearly, uh, survey among staff. Uh, this will allow us to do a deeper dive as well with staff sentiments. And I'd like to thank Harris for negotiating a really sweet contract of thought exchange.
And Amanda.
And, and it made something that was really expensive. Good job. Uh, recently attended the Washington Public Library Directors Retreat in Winter, Washington. Uh, lots of talk on the legislative landscape for twenty twenty-five. The first time in twelve years with the governor. You got a lot of turnover with both the House and the Senate, and just people not rerunning and new faces. So it's going to be a pretty wild session. We're coming in, trying to make their butt. Uh, I do monitor all the legislation that comes through and rate it as far as how it might impact libraries. Um, so I might need to invest in stronger reading glasses. Because the font that they use, I swear, is from nineteen seventy-two, and it's the lightest gray font you could ever encounter. It's just, I think that they don't want people to read the legislation. Uh, just finished up my second term, uh, with the Washington Library Council. Uh, this is a group that is, uh, you know, the state librarian and, uh, Office of the Secretary of State. We advise, uh, them on the use of federal funds, uh, as well as any programs that they do in a statewide basis for libraries. Good group, we're gonna miss being on that council. Were you turned out? Oh, yeah, that was. Uh, yeah, it's turned out, you know, we didn't do, actually served an extra year because of pandemic in this room. Uh, and we also sent a small team to Wolfcombe in London. Uh, this is an annual conference that focuses on open source, uh, things, uh, for libraries and folio obviously is a big topic. Uh, a discussion and conversation over there, and you know, it's really great to see our team leading the charge, uh, around folio. Um, and it's a great way for them to make connections. They got some face time to folks in the Library of Congress, who was also in the middle of, uh, adopting folio as their platform. Um, so a really good, uh, use of funds on our part, uh, to send them to this conference. Uh, we have the staff day in September. Uh, this is a time where we not only, uh, honor our staff with their, their service, uh, and in years of service, uh, but also we engage around different topics of the things that we're doing. And this year we focused on our vision twenty thirty, so we got lots of feedback from staff through that. Uh, we're currently analyzing that, we're gonna have a leadership retreat around that and hope to have, uh, a draft to share and support. Probably sometime in January. Uh, I believe that would our star spotlight for August, you know, went to more people that are in this room right now. Uh, Jinjin, Elena, Jason, and Vanessa, or what you're gonna hear about, uh, a little bit later today. They're worth around the ceremony for the opening of the, uh, Indian Trail Garden. Also, thank you to Charis, who was there in my absence as I was out of town. Uh, I heard it was a great event. And finally, I've restarted my office hours for staff at all of our branches, so it's a lot of my focus, actually, this week, we travel more and more. And engaging. Congratulations to the board. Well done. And let's see. And that, that, oh, this year. Hello. I, I keep forgetting.
Yeah.
You're good. I, I, I like the name, but I'm biased. Um, and I do apologize, I'm gonna have to head out, uh, a little early to head over for, um, neighborhood council. So, um, probably pretty quick and of course, always want to leave time, uh, for questions. Um, so I think the big kind of issue on everyone's mind is, uh, budget. And, uh, we are really kind of moving into crunch time. Uh, we continue to have the joint, uh, sessions with the, uh, Brown administration and seeing a lot of transparency and collaboration, which I think has, uh, really been excellent. And, uh, we learned, uh, last night, the mayor gave the state of the affairs and conditions at the city that, um, the deficit has gone down through a lot of the cost-saving measures from twenty-five million to seven point nine million for twenty twenty-five, which is, uh, r- really huge, and I think gives us a, a lot, uh, you know, better, better number to, uh, kind of work with. Um, as we, um, start looking at, um, how to, how to balance for this year. Um, some policy decisions that I think have been, um, kind of noteworthy, uh, with the community safety, uh, sales tax. We did pass an ordinance last Monday to put a sunset clause on it. And then also to communicate, uh, to have a segregated fund to, I think, communicate, uh, a lot of the, uh, again, needs for transparency and feedback that we got from folks, making sure that this does remain in a protected fund. Um, and will go to, uh, police, uh, fire, um, the Office of Ombuds, as well as municipal court. Uh, we also passed a resolution last night, uh, in support of the measure. Um, there's been some ongoing, uh, roundtable discussions around homelessness. Uh, appreciate everyone that has turned out, and it's been, um, wonderful to host these, um, at the library. Uh, and getting a lot of good feedback from folks. There's a lot of different discussions on the table around, um, enforcement, as well as, um, some protections. Um, and a lot of good feedback, I think, that's coming together. And, um, the plan is to have like a bigger town hall here at the, uh, end of December to kind of present a menu of options, uh, to the community. Um, so really appreciate everyone that has given feedback, uh, on those. Uh, last night, uh, we also approved some modest, uh, changes to, um, the utility rates. Um, so this was a, a kind of a tiered increase that does have a lower tier for, um, low-income users, um, and, uh, senior citizens, um, with a higher rate for, uh, high users. Um, I, I voted for it because honestly, I think for a city of our size, um, we are in a pretty good shape with our rate structure in comparison to other cities that have had higher jumps, uh, over the last, uh, two years. Um, and then, uh, we did, uh, pass an ordinance last night to update our, uh, rental registry, um, for landlords. And so, um, this definitely got a, a little bit, uh, I, I think there was some controversy around this, not afraid to say so, but it would, uh, prevent, uh, evictions and rent increases if a landlord has not participated in the rental registry. Um, but I see it as really a win-win for both landlords and tenants because, um, uh, participating in the registry, um, really helps with, uh, code enforcement and getting access. One for tenants, um, if they are living in substandard, uh, living con- living conditions. Um, and then it also helps with upkeep, maintenance, and the longevity for a lot of our, uh, rental units. Um, so that passed, uh, last night as well. Um, one thing I think that's just kind of top of mind for me, uh, is a budget priority. You know, as we are moving into, uh, inclement weather, I know I've said this before, but I just really appreciate the library's role and, um, their support and, and being a resource, uh, for, for folks. And, um, that would be seeing if we can advocate for more funding, um, for emergency shelters, for inclement weather response. Um, the funding has been fairly status quo, uh, as far as I can recall for the last couple of budget cycles of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. Uh, that just seems inadequate to me. Uh, I think that, um, we, we can find some money to, um, to, to have more, and, uh, it's another, uh, state legislative priority that I'll be asking for, uh, as well. Yeah, happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Paul? Thanks, Paul, thanks for the update.
Yeah, thank you.
Fantastic. Amanda.
Hey. So, uh, this past month, uh, we had a successful banned book sweep campaign, and we marked that with some new staff t-shirts. You can see a photo of that down below, which we handed out at staff day. Um, and this was also covered on the front page of the Spokesman Review in a really beautiful article. So that was really fun to call attention to our emphasis on the freedom to read and the availability of those books in our library. Not all libraries in the country are experiencing that freedom right now. Um, and so I'm grateful to the board for continuing to support that freedom to read as well. Um, in front of you, you'll see the fall issue of Live at City Local is now available in all branches and online. So this one covers a number of topics, but the cover story is about Spokane is Reading, which will happen on October twenty-fourth. Um, and the author is Spokane, was born in Spokane and is based in Montana. And it's a really beautiful story of the indigenous, modern indigenous experience. So I hope we can make it to that. There's one on, at one PM in the Valley, at the Spokane Valley Library, and one, um, presentation at seven at Central Library. So that is Spokane is Reading, which is in partnership with Antis and SCLB. Uh, and then I wanted to point out, we had another really successful month as far as email marketing goes. Um, we had saw a huge spike again in one of our blog posts being our top visited page for the month. It was Hispanic and Latin heritage month. Um, so the book list and just, it's really been rewarding to see all of the effort that the team puts into the email marketing, really resulting in traffic to our website, more engagement, um, and love seeing those numbers. So, um, that pretty much wraps up my report for today, but if you have any questions, I can answer them. Maybe, Darren?
Because you're expecting me to, to ask another question? Oh. Okay, since, since you're giving me the open, uh, social media stats.
Yeah.
Facebook continues to lag just a little bit behind Instagram. Is this going to be a trend that continues? Cause we've been seeing it nationwide.
It's a trend we've been seeing nationwide in li- I mean, I can't speak for everything, but I know libraries have been reporting this. It's, it's all based on the algorithm. Ne- negative news tends to get more clicks and more engagement. Um, I can share an example, we've had some activity on our Facebook that causes some of our followers to interact. Maybe if there's misinformation being shared, and that actually drives engagement, and then our numbers go up. But I don't always think of it as a positive thing, it's just, it's, it's just the numbers and, and the engagement. But sometimes it's not always the best to see high numbers there. Sometimes it's good and, and sometimes it's not.
And you're tracking those?
I'm sorry?
Or you're, and you're tracking those?
Yeah, we track all of our interactions. We both look at the data monthly and regularly on the posts. And then we're also tracking all of the comments all of the time and monitoring them. And just, what, we're, we're feeling out the best way to monitor those and how to react and engage. And for the most part, we just try and let the discourse happen, um, amongst followers.
I just wanted to ask about the voting resources under the email marketing section. Just curious what those resources are.
So we published a blog on voting resources as far as places that you can fact-check, how to register to vote. Um, state law or national law is that you can't endorse or recommend any candidates, but our place at the library is to connect people with the information and resources. So the voting resources blog was around those topics, um, neutral locations to find information and, um, check your facts and, um, how to vote.
Thank you. Jason?
Right, uh, down a little bit in attendance, because we didn't have chocolate and tequila again. I think we should do it monthly.
So noted.
And still at three hundred and forty-five events and, uh, three thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight people attend. Um, story times continue to just bring in almost half of our attendance, which is great, fourteen hundred people. Um, some highlights, uh, KYRS monthly concert they do, holding a hundred and seventy-two folks this month, which they keep bringing in people. So that's great partnership with them, and it allows us to have more programming without using any of our staff on it. So that's what the whole partnership is about. Uh, A is for apple parties that Denise's team put together for kids. Um, that was the biggest, the highest attended program, a hundred and seven people showed up to one of those, but two hundred and seventy-seven people showed up to them, to all of them combined for the, for this month. Um, eighty-eight music lessons this month, which is a record, uh, and that's because we have a second instructor, and we were just informed that that grant has been renewed, so we will continue to have a second instructor. Great, um. We hosted, as we mentioned, the city council, town hall, homelessness, um, and a lot of people showed up for that. Hundred and thirty-two people showed up for what Jinjin's about to talk about, the Indian Trail, her garden, all of their meadow opening. And if you go to Central, this isn't this month, uh, next, last month, there, there's a exhibit on the third floor that Vanessa has curated. Um, she prepared from the National Library of Medicine about Frankenstein. There's a lot of creepy stuff up there you can check out, but it's a really great exhibit that everybody should check out when they're asked.
I hear you have to go out on a limb for that. Tough role. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Okay, so now new business time. And that means budget time, so.
Thank you. Agenda item thirteen A, twenty twenty-five budget adoption. So as you recall in prior meetings, we've mostly just done informational meetings. That's because we want to have the most informed budget adoption process, that's the most transparent for this public setting. So, um, I did attend the city, the mayor's budget meeting last week. Um, really no new updates out, out of that, as council member Dylan spoke to earlier. Um, they were able to whittle down the twenty twenty-five deficit, the seven point nine million. The twenty-six deficit is just under ten point five million. So I, I really feel good that they're doing everything they can, turning every stone over and trying to do their, their best before really putting it on the deep departments to experience that ten percent or in our, our position five percent cut. Um, but for this agenda item, we'll be just looking at the budget adoption for our normal operating hours as we have them post bond. Um, and then I'll have a separate agenda item for that book one resolution, that's the potential cuts we're looking at. But we'll do those in, in two separate items. Um, and then just a quick notation too, um, the city council will be going over budget hearings in November with the actual final adoption in early December. Um, so if you go to after my cover sheet, here is a snapshot, um, similar to the same format as we were looking before. So here's our combined statement of revenues over expenditures. Uh, our total expenditures are the fourteen million, three seventy-four, oh ninety-four. I do want to make a note, but this is a little bit higher than what we presented in the prior months. That amount that it's higher by is twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars in services and charges. That's for the thought exchange contract that we're currently working on for the super cool, um, AI platform that we're gonna be doing, that Andrew spoke to earlier. So really looking forward to that, but that's gonna be beginning in twenty twenty-five. So that's, that's like, um, accounted for in here. We also do have some, some revenue to offset that, as we're going to be looking for some, some potential, uh, support from the, the foundation or perhaps other sources in the, uh, in, in the community to, to offset that, to o- offset that additional cost. So if you look at our overall fund, um, fund balance reduction for the twenty twenty-five budget, we will be overspending from our re- our net resources by one million, three hundred and three thousand, eight fifteen. That's the same dollar amount as presented in prior months. I just wanted to dis- disclose that, that difference. Um, so moving on. So just for the sake of not being so redundant, I have a little bit of different format. Um, so you guys can kind of look at these in, in detail with, with some graphs for you. So here's a page of all of our financial resources, a snapshot of twenty-four versus twenty-five, with the graph showing our twenty twenty-five non-tax-related financial. with the graph showing our 2025 non-tax related financial resources. That totals 772,700. So note, I just wanted to call out again, the general fund allocation has been the same for three years. We have not had a significant increase in that since 2022. And then for the levy lift of dollars, we do have the 2.6% increase in assessed home values. We are getting seven cents per 1,000 on that. And then for the non-tax resources, some of the main significant difference here is some trend adjustments. We, we do have a slight decrease in the interest earnings because we are, we are spending down our, our fund balance. So our, our investment is going to be less, of course. Recently this, the city did, did make some changes to their investments. So they're hoping to yield a higher rate for next year. So hopefully we'll earn a little bit more than, than what we have budgeted here. But trying to stay conservative with that number. Other differences. So the contribution line, I want to point out that's now from 2024 budget 162,500. That does include that increase for the thought exchange support that we're seeking for 27,500. And then intergovernmental revenues, that's other, other outside grant dollars, including state. Our FPS partnership, that $50,000, that's essentially just a reimbursement for the software and licensing for the kiosk and book, book return equipment that, that we have with them. So moving on to expenditures, here's just a high level age of our expenditures by department. If you look at public services, support services and program services, those combined total, those total 52% of our entire expenditure budget. That, you know, year over year, that's obviously always our, our, our main driver and, and main focus. So here is the next page is the expenditures by type, which is kind of a different outlook on, on that same dollar amount. Note for the salaries, wages and the benefits. So over 10 million of our budget or 70% of our budget is first, is for staffing alone. Again, when we go through the resolution book one options, we're not interested in cutting any of that. It's strictly just going to be one time postponing of items. So we'll, we'll get into that in the next agenda item. But I just want to rest, rest assured, people is not what we're looking at. So. Next page is a snapshot of those staffing costs. So again, we're going to continue with the 100, 103.5 FTE. That's a total of 116 jobs. People that does not include these substitutes and pages that, that we also have on our staff. And I just want to make a really cool note. So right, we, we have 58 hours, public hours per week where we used to be at 22.5. So it's an increase of 158% of our hours. And compare that to the level of staffing we have, our staff has increased by 25%. So just kudos to everybody. I know they all work really hard, but that's, that's kind of a fun stat if I wanted to share. Moving on. So here's a snapshot of our supplies and services. So some of the main differences here for supplies, we've got a pretty significant increase in our computers. So over 40,000 that's expected for next year. We, we did increase our safety supplies for our security team that's at Central. So that's, we're basically establishing a budget for, for them so they can buy uniforms and things of that nature. That amount is 15,000. And then the rest is some, some trend adjustments as to what's, what's expected. Contract services, I'll point out that has a decrease of 115,000 for next year compared to 2024. Some of the main drivers in that is we, we're decreasing what our anticipated DEI contract might be. And then the folio development IT services were moved to temp seasonal budget where it used to be a third party cost. So we, we moved that as well. All right. Here's a snapshot of inner fund charges. This one's extremely boring because I don't show any difference from 24 to 25. And again, there's no, I, I don't have any feedback yet from the city, the city budget office. They've been pretty busy, but I'm still waiting to hear what the negotiations are on some of these savings to, to ensure that we're not paying for something that we are receiving services for. So I will update you on that once I have those, those, those numbers. And then for the capital trends. As you can see, the library books and materials are still sitting at the 1.5 million for the 2025 budget. And then we, the total deduction in 2025 is really just trend adjustments. We're seeing a small amount of, of building improvements. Obviously they're mostly new buildings. So it's very minor, minor cost that, that we're having right now. Machinery and equipment, we really don't have a lot of difference there, but just a reduction of 10,000. And then vehicles, just anticipating one vehicle 55,000. So the following pages are going to be identical to what has been presented in the past. This is the format of our financial reports that we show each month. So that's just supplemental for you and, and the public to have on, on hand. So if you get through those, I do have another copy of our org chart, which I always like to have on hand. Well, that's it's one we only show annually, but I just want to point out that that's part of this package. So if anybody ever wants to go back and look at it, there for you. It basically is showing where, who we put it to the administration versus public services, programming, support and facilities. And behind that is again, our snapshot of our seven-year annual forecasting. Again, this is based on the current 2025 budgets. As it's being proposed to be adopted, does not include the book one portion, which is a separate agenda item. So if you look at our total operating days at the very bottom of this, we're, we're anticipated for 2025 to land at about 117. We're at 119 right now as a reminder. But in, in coming years by 2028, as you can see, we would be in the negative if everything goes as is. So depending on what support we get from the city, we will reassess where we're sitting at in 27. And we will know what that levy lift ask is going to have to be to, to the public in order to support our, our operations going after that. Any questions on 2025 budget adoption?
Pretty razor thin.
Sorry?
Pretty razor thin.
Yes, it is. It is.
Can I ask a question? You raised before the concern about the increase in the insurance coverage and the reduction in the umbrella coverage. And I know that you're in the midst of looking for any coverage for next year. The budgets, I'm reading it and I'm afraid I don't have a page number under functions.
122,000, I think.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's a slight increase from last year.
Yeah, it's about 4,000 from last year. So typically that would be offset with some of the professional services that we, and, and landscaping within that facilities department. Those are sometimes slightly over budgeted to accommodate if there's any overage there. If, if it's a significant amount that it comes in as, then I will inform you, but also it'll be part of the agenda adoption process. That final dollar amount will be shown there. So I do in the, in the line item for salaries and wages, there is $75,000 reserve for budget adjustment to account for any unknowns such as that as well. So we can reflect it in, in multiple ways. It just depends on what our strategy looks like for that year.
You just remind us what the, what your hopeful deadline is to have perhaps a new insurance.
The insurance policy will most likely be in December board meeting. It takes, it takes quite a bit of time. We always start early October and, you know, commence process.
Because of the amount of work.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. Yeah, absolutely.
So I have a question. I recall when we were looking at what were we going to do in the levy lid lift for, that we went out for, but I guess that was the 2020. We did that, put that to the voters in 23.
Is that? We put it to the voters in 24.
Oh, was this February? So I know that we were anticipating that we would be expending some of our reserves to kind of bring things back in line and, and then we'll go out again at 27. The, but with the city budget deficit, it seems like our reserves are draining faster. And I'm, I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit to what's kind of, do we have a target number of operating days that we'd like to have in our, in our reserves? And how much faster is this kind of, you know, 19 days sounds pretty low before we're going to get a, a, a chance to find perhaps an increase in that revenue stream. I just would like to hear some dialogue about that.
So the, the recommend, the recommended number of days in your reserves really shouldn't fall below 17 or 18. We used to be, as a reminder, we used to be at zero. So we really wanted to build that up to be a minimum of three months. So our goal was to get between 60 and, and 90, 90 being our preferred amount. Especially because we don't operate with a large budget. Many libraries where they strive for that 17 to 18 days have, you know, a $50 million budget and their reserve is much higher. Whereas ours, it's really a small dollar amount when you really look at it compared to what our, our overall costs are, especially that being people. So I prefer for us to stay in that, that higher range while we can. So that's part of our strategy and our, our talks with, with the mayor and, and her, her administration is really kind of coming down to here's the services we, we provided for the public. They have been voting yes every time we ask them for a levy renewal. So we've got the support. We've got the, the need there. So it's really just telling our story and making sure that we're heard, we're understood. And our, our goal really is to get that support in the general fund allocation and to really not have to go out and ask for levy, levy lift renewal. But if it's not possible, the mayor is not able to support that. We're going to continue with our, our work with, with the public in that outreach and doing those campaigns. In, in the past, we had the levy lift renewal for a total of seven years. Whereas this time around, we just did a three-year because we knew administration was changing. We knew we were sitting on a large fund balance, which really isn't our, our job to act as a savings bank account. It's really just to be at a net zero is what we really want to do with our budget. So our, our hope is that our messages is heard from the mayor's office. We do get that, that, that recognition going forward and that our ask to the public is minimal or none. But we really won't, won't know until we see how this vote comes out in, in, in November and what the new strategies, what, what those long-term effects look like in parameters. Does that answer?
Sure. Yes, thank you. I just have, you know, mostly just wanted to hear, I have more thoughts about those kinds of issues as we're looking towards the next ask and where we have come from, the one we just did. So thank you.
Any other thoughts, questions?
Do we have the wherewithal to increase media image for contributions and donations to try to bring outside sources?
We do. Yeah. I mean, it's kind of how we would strategize a campaign like that.
Yeah.
Yes. And one thing we're going to do for next year is the award that Nada and team won this year in 2024 was $10,000 and we're going to allocate that post something special, I don't know what you have in mind exactly, but we're going to, so we're going to in, increase their advertising budget for next year by that, that 10,000. So there could be a placeholder there for something like that.
And that's something we can probably work with the foundation on as the donating bank of sort of where we're going to get just an opportunity to bring some other funding sources.
Yeah, we also got that thought exchange coming, which is really great outreach.
They're doing their, they're going to be doing a retreat in November, I believe, to sort of find wise strategies for recurring donations and things like that.
That's me, you're average person though, but they can go to the library. Starting GoFundUs? A little bit bad. I know.
Okay. So is there an action item?
Yes, there is. So approval action recommended. We request, we request adoption of the 2025 budget as presented for library fund 1300 operation. And this includes the carry forward of encumbrances that remain outstanding at year end 2024 for both the library fund 1300 and the library capital bond funds in 365. So I move that we adopt the 2025 budget as presented.
Was that a second?
Yes, it was. Second.
Any other conversation? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Who's in carries? Sending good thoughts here.
Thank you for all of your work on this. Yeah. Thank you guys for the support.
Feels like it's been a few weeks since we started having to stay or something. It's been a little roller coaster again. I'm ready to get out of this. Okay. Indian Trail Bird Garden and Pollinator. Sorry.
I'm not done talking. I know you're coming.
Whenever something like that happens, blame me. Everybody else, it's okay.
So yeah, agenda item 13C. So this is resolution 2024 dash one, book one budget reductions. So as we've discussed in private meetings, and as you know, the city is proposing the temporary sales tax increase to the voters this November. Should that be declined? Should that not pass? There, we're looking at all of the city departments experiencing the 10% budget reduction. We are looking at a 5% cut. That would also come with, so our, our general fund reduction, our, our general fund allocation would be taken down to by 487,745. We did identify a total expenditure savings as we've gone over in previous meetings. $580,700. So just this first page is a snapshot of, of those items. So we would hold vacant positions. So this is the social services manager and the current affairs specialist. That's $210,000 of that amount. We would potentially look at a decrease of our digital library materials by 10%, so it's 150,000 in savings. We would postpone any outside DEI consulting contract work. That budget currently is set for 60,000 for 2025. We would cancel the replacement of one of our fleet vehicles and continue to run those beyond their current useful life. We would potentially restrict travel for all staff, excluding the executive director. That says just under 40,000. We would implement an overtime restriction for staff. That would be a potential savings of 35,800 maximum. And then a reduction of our computer replacements. As I mentioned earlier, that increased by over 40,000 for 2025. So we would just bring that back down a bit and reduce that by 30,000. So this is just a snapshot of those items. Again, this may or may not be implemented by city council. This, this agenda item allows us to also do a, to also implement some of these regardless of, of what happens, just for our due diligence of saving our, our fund balance a little bit of money. The pages behind this are supplemental. So same format as the 2025 budget adoption pages that I just showed you. Except everything highlighted in blue reflects the items listed above for the book, book one reductions. And then I do on the last page of this, if you want to keep going through it, you can, but except we've seen the last page of this, again, is our seven-year projections with the, with the decrease in our general fund included as well as the, the full amounts of the book one reductions reflected in the expenditures. So those are highlighted in blue as well. And then it just kind of shows our, our, our projected years and how, how that affects it. Pretty straightforward, but there were no, no, no changes since we last spoke on that one. Are there any deep dives, concerns, thoughts, questions on some of that? I know it's been a little while.
With the DEI, which has something that the city is planning to take on the entire city board. So they feel comfortable. Leading on it within our own board. So we're happy to see the city.
Again, this is, these are items that Again, this is, these are items that in a way just kind of kick kick the can down the road. We made a promise to the voters that we would maintain our current level of services with that levy re- renewal that they voted on earlier this year. Um. We're gonna up up uphold that promise. So this is the best, this is kind of what we found within those means.
If the budget, if the voters approve the additional sale tax, how? And I think I'm just confused about the ambiguity of. If you will or will not implement some of these. If if we had the board approve it, how will we know? When you are going to do that or?
We would absolutely co- uh communicate that to you at a public meeting.
So, for example. You know, instead of cutting staff. We felt it was more humane to cut digital.
For sure, yeah.
Um. So. We can make that decision and I think it's 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 largely going to depend on. How much of the general fund is actually?
Yeah.
If any cut from us. Uh. So, uh, as we've been speaking with the administration. There's no interest in. Cutting staff, cutting hours, cutting programs.
Yeah.
Or cutting our collection. So you'll probably not see those things. You know, come up as far as what we're doing. This is largely an exercise for us to. Prepare for the worst.
Yeah.
And if there are staff vacancies that occur during the course of the twenty twenty five budget year, the intention is to fill them.
Yes.
And maintain the level of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. We need our people.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're, sorry, and we're just voting now on this for twenty twenty five.
That's correct.
A- any more discussion? Hey. So, resolution twenty twenty four dash book one, budget reductions.
So I move to approve the authority to reduce the twenty twenty five adopted library funds thirteen hundred expenditure budget or. The exercise of cost reduction by an amount up to and not to exceed. Five hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred dollars among the identified items of this document and supplemental.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and other discussion. They were say by sitting by an eye.
Aye.
Eye.
Nice.
Motion carries.
Now for the fun stuff.
Okay, so. Now we're back to the Indian Trail Burgarten and Pollinator metal update.
So I moved to this size so that you don't have to move their head back and forth. So, uh, are you willing to control this? Do you wanna do that? I'm happy to. Oh, sure. Okay.
Yeah.
So this project is making a photographer out of me. I'm very proud of this picture until I don't know how it happened. Anyway, um. This has been quite a long time, actually not that long. I remember vividly presenting this idea to terrorists back in April last year. This is a side by side. At the exact same spot, eighteen year, uh, I mean eighteen months apart. So, um, next slide please. Same here, and you can see the difference. When we go into this project. I asked myself this question, how do I make a very. Neighboring neighborhood branch into a destination like we did a Shado library. Shado library has become such a destination for multicultural education that I often. That if I move a program to South Hill on that topic, people show up a shade of. And I was like, oh, it just missed it as a sample. So people, a lot of people don't even think it more. They say, oh, this is multicultural. It's a shade of. So I obviously could not repeat the same topic at Indian Trail. So my eyes turned to this almost one acre long. And, um, I don't remember, I don't know if you have seen this before. This made this piece. It's about exactly one acre and about, I'm imagining for the life of this library for twenty five years. It has been there. And I did my survey, I did my research before I presented the idea. I asked a lot of patrons walking through the door, how do you enjoy the lawn? And the most surprising reaction was, what's wrong? So I was a frequent patron to this library myself before I became an employee. I never knew there was a long thing. So anyway, what do we, what do we want to accomplish? Other than the very lofty idea of making Indian Trail a destination. Almost immediately, we want to reduce some resources that this lawn is apparently sucking up. Many water. But personally, my secret agenda is to totally eliminate herbicide use. And don't get me into that. About herbicide use, because that'll be five hours. Okay, so anyway, so with that two goal, one is to. To be a good environmental steward. For this piece of lawn and to help to facilitate the health aspect. Of what a lush green one acre lawn could have cost using herbicide to keep that effect. So. That's too long, isn't it? So anyway, um, so that's actually two very simple objectives, but. The third objective, which naturally will be a very end result of that first two objectives, is to create something that will produce. In one way, ethically. Uh, more practical purpose, maybe food for humans, food for wildlife. I actually did not know. So we went through some crazy ideas. The first idea that I pondered was an orchard. And if you walk this neighborhood like I did several times, you would notice that this is actually an excellent. Place for have a small orchard. Because uh water from five mile period comes down here and this is in a very almost unnoticed for depression. And it captures the moisture on its way down to the river. And an orchard with proper water, with proper sunlight would really thrive. And in a very, in our very comprehensive cultural education in the last four years that we built. This is the part that is still missing. And there is tremendous amount of potential. We could do. Many topics, we could use this pa- space for education. So I floated this idea to my good friend at the Master Gardens. And he said, Jia Jia, that was a really great idea, but I need to learn to know. The county is in the process of establishing a pest control ward. And their target is small growers like you. So before you finish that sentence, I couldn't throw away that idea fast enough. So my next idea is let's rewind. That let's rewind this place for simplicity simplicity sake. Just plant some native berry bearing trees to create a wildlife sanctuary for birds and small mammals. And be done with it, because I am driven by a very strong desire to leave this place as with less. Little minutes as possible. Um. So, uh, maybe we create a meandering path around so it's small enough. For children to be safe playing in this, but big enough for them to feel like they're exploring. Uh, in wilderness. So anyway, so I floated this idea with my contact at the city water department. And their in-house landscape designer says, oh, no, 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 Jenny, you want to add a pollinators medal. So that. The concept of a burgarden slash pollinators medal was born. So as you can see, this is a working copy that we were working on. And it incorporated some of the elements that I was originally thinking, but we added the medal itself. This actually was a mistake. And it's not a very good picture because it was in the shade. But if you have an opportunity to study the garden, you will notice that on this side. We created a path, a space that was um mulched by crush rocks. And it still no practical purpose at all. And it was actually a mistake, something that was lost in translation from the concept. Through the execution was too big. It was supposed to be a space that we could plant some of those said berry trees. I saw that space, my heart actually sank. But in the very next moment, it left with joy because right there is our space for the community. Together, we had not planned for a space to really relax and gather. But here it is, it's big enough for us to hold outdoor activities for friends. For little children to sit and play. So. Any sense? We actually created a little park with that element. So sometimes. God really does work in mysterious ways. So at this, at this point, it was complete. So way before the pa- uh park, the garden was completed. Um, I started working, establishing community connection relationship. And believe it or not, with this burgarden in place, my backbone was different. I feel really good going to Audubon Society and saying, hey, we really have this beautiful thing coming. What do you think? Where are you meeting right now? And they say, oh, we met at this place that costs us seventy five dollars per month. So our meeting room really speaks for themselves, right? But I said, oh, why don't you come and join us? And so we walked throughout the summer while this garden was being built. And in September, it was thrilled. In September, they moved in with us. And held out their first monthly meeting. This is their second meeting. The first meeting had forty five people attended. The second meeting had sixty people attended. I counted seven places that I've worked my regular patrons. And I count, I asked them, where did you get this information? Were you really a member before this? They say, oh, no, 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 we got this information from email. So we know, I know that, uh, last week's meeting, the second time. We have added to their, enhanced their attendance, and that's what it's all about. So. Now, the another major community partner that we fought throughout this process was urban forestry, City Park and Rex. Harris has asked me if I wanted this garden, uh, turn key. And I say, oh, no, uh, please give the planting to me and I will use this opportunity. To forge some community funds, and that's what we did. So. Um, Katie, who's uh Kostanke at the Urban Forestry. Has been really supportive of this project. They provided not only all the trees and shrubs that planted for all of us. This was September seventeenth, the week before the one opening. Free, and this is what it looks like. By the time it's all said and done. So Suzie Tree Project was another entity that we reached out while this garden was being built. And she could not, Nancy, the founder of this project, could not have been more supportive. She is, before I even finished presenting this idea to her. She actually brought tears to her eyes and she, she really wanted to be part of this. So she dominated three beautiful foregone trees, this one here on the left. We actually use that as, um. The angry, the the, we had a program called Read for Trees for the children during the garden was being built. During the time the garden was being built and the children gets to read. Books on trees and by the end of the program, they vote. They voted on what trees they would like to have planted. So I set aside a spot for them and they voted a live tree. So on top of that, we planted two ash, mountain ash for the birds. One of them unfortunately did not make it, it died of transplant shock and so Suzie Tree Project was that. None of those caused us a pain. Then I started begging. Um, something I do very well. So most people I reach out is again Audubon Society. And the president, before I even finish my first sentence. Burbank, Burgarden Burbank, and he said, how many do you want? I was actually taken aback. Um, he said, how about three? I said, no, 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 I only wanted one. But he insisted on three, so he had actually three burba sitting out there. He made for us specifically. For this garden, um, three of different sizes, very generous. The next one, the next community member I approached was the Master Gardeners Foundation. And, um, a little bit, if I just tip, you know, always, I know that they were building this. Gorgeous reaping compost, uh, reaping compost system around the community. So I reached out and said, hey, we got this space. And in fact, the space that I was referring to was the previous space that said wasn't. That was an mistake, but it freed up all this beautiful space for us to install some of this. And so that was the day that she delivered this and it was really heavy and it's on her truck and I said, where is the help? She said, that's you, that's her. I would say I couldn't get that thing out of your truck. So Jordan from Facilities was right here, so he really had helped me.
Hmm.
I went out to Indian Trail Neighborhood Council. And, um, the the treasurer, Jinan, immediately pledged a picnic table. And it's now standing out there. I work on that table out there today as a gorgeous place. And with that, with the addition of the picnic table, I feel that the place is complete in terms of hardware. But we're not done planting and it still looks fairly fair so far. So speaking about creating a platform, I truly personally believe. That library is at the forefront, is the place to create a cloud platform. For all our different community members to shine. Like I said, um, previously, Audubon Society. I have heard it so often, and that's why I reach out to them, is I really like what they're doing, but they're way out of, uh, French Aberdeen. I don't want to go all the way out there. And I I continue to hear that. And so this is how we create the platform. For the opening day, I actually think at that time, I thought, well, this would be a marvelous opportunity for Audubon Society. To come and do a membership drive. Right, and that's the day that I said to myself, but I stopped at Audubon Society, why don't I just go in town? So then that idea came to me only about four, five weeks before the one opening. So I really had to scramble to reach out to all different kinds of community members, institutions. To come and join us for that day as a platform to make aware of their cause. On that day, we have eleven information booths. So that was a remarkable turn. I have one very far. One thing I I regret. I regret not putting a picture in this because a picture always speaks a thousand words. Is, uh, out of this eleven entities, the number twelve, actually, number twelve drove all the way from Cordelia. And I'll talk about, I mean, a little bit in more details. Because they believe in what we're doing and because they want to be part of it, so. And on that day, we provided a platform for the urban forestry. To do what they love to do, to do what they are passionate about, and which is planting tree. So we created this program for them and they raffled all eight trees on that day. Creating values all the way around. This is really an accidental gallery. And going into, this is the first program I have ever did in the garden. Going into this before the open, that is. Going into this, my very simple desire was just to create a path through the meadow to invite people to come in and explore. I don't want this meadow to be forbidding. So, um, people to go in, but I, I worry they may be intimidating or we're not supposed to touch because it's full of flowers, right? But I don't like craft projects, so my colleagues will hold my hand through it. But look at how the community responded. Look what beautiful work they created. Blow my mind. Particular interest is that, um, stone on the far right, that tropical sin. So while we were doing this program, you can kind of see in the background is our neighbors, the apartment buildings. And I seem to be, you know, when I was wandering around, I looked up and there were a young man, I should say very teenagers, and apparently his sister looking down with great deal of interest. So I said, hey, what are you doing there? Get down here, get down there. And they said, is that free? Very tentative, very timid. And they were speaking, quoting English, very, uh, uh, what should I say? Just not fluent in English. So, so I said, no, 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 it's completely free. Come join us. So they both came down and that's what they created. So now I know, so now they know everything that's happening in this library, everything that's happening in the garden is free. And tell all your neighbors. And this, almost every time, which is almost every day that I came to Indian Trail Library in the last, since last, since May, I have seen children playing. This is, uh, in the, in that. So this is the vision, really. This is the vision that's realized. We even have enough papers to make a path through the meadow to lead to the apartment building. Because as you can see, that's an old photo. When I was doing research on this project, we noticed that that, uh, our neighbors like to take a shortcut. And so when I, with this meadow, meadow first emerged, I noticed the pattern continued, flowers or not. So we might submit that though. Make the most of it and give them a gallery too. So. So this meadow, this whole project is, you know, this garden is a fledgling garden. I don't know I, what's going to happen yet. A lot of relationship, a lot of programs, a lot of possibilities haven't even been contemplated yet. But I do know, um, looking ahead, there are a couple of things that I do know for sure. One is the maintenance. My second idea, remember we wired in it and we done with it? I meant to, I was still this idea in terms of program. It may not be impact, but in terms of maintenance. So this meadow had an interesting mix of eighty percent grass. Okay, so which means that without proper maintenance, at least for the next two years and now, so it's about three years of fairly consistent maintenance without that, Darwinism would take over. Which means grass would take over because the grass is the stronger in this mix. Um, so the good news is the germination rate was about ninety five percent in the garden. And the value is germination rate of ninety five percent. Because all the grass, if you pay attention and look closely, the grass is now emerging with this poor weather. And if we don't take that out, illuminate that grass, in three years, we won't see a bloom. And this is really nothing more unknown about a meadow. A meadow always faces the existential crisis. And that's the nature of a meadow unless we want to really give it up for nature to take over. So in the next two years, counting this as first year, in the next two years, I'm going to wear out my pickaxe. And I do appreciate my boss and Kerry some Paul to give me some help often in terms of labor to kill those grass, but this will be ongoing for at least another year. Just, just so that you know, I can stay up all night pickaxe. So in terms of impact, like I said, a lot hasn't been explored because I haven't turned my attention to it yet. But the guy that's roping all the way from Coeur d'Alene is some fairly new idea, new concept to me. It's a place called Wings, Wings Raising. Wings Raising is a nonprofit that's dedicated to the conservation of environment. Raising awareness of the harms of herbicides, wreck of environment. And they do this by actually raising monarch butterflies. So these people are connected, the founder, Patrick, up there is, um, environmental lawyer, environmental. So he's fairly connected to this thing called Monarch City USA, which I never heard about him now. And as you can see, um, he's got some interesting idea. It sounds like he's got some plan for us because when he saw this meadow, he was really impressed. And he sent his, uh, Eastern Washington representative to come and check out this meadow. And their conclusion is go, what do we need? The infrastructure is there to make, uh, create, um, put Spokane on the map to connect Spokane with the rest of the nation with this thing called Monarch City USA. So something, we went out to create a simple space. We actually might end up at the forefront of others. That's what I'm thinking, but that's something I haven't had until I hung up my pickaxe for the season. Have the time to explore. So stay tuned. Um, I think there's one more slide. Exact, okay, thank you. So, but I do know this, this is something simple that I can do is once the winter has hit. This is something I can do is to apply to Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife for a designation for this meadow as a wildlife sanctuary. So when that is done, the first step will be set for, um, a possible bigger goal of a Monarch City U N P. And I was given a clue that Monarch City USA do all their education program through the public libraries. And funny enough, believe it or not, the first city of Monarch City USA is Vinewood. And Maple Valley is the first city. Currently, they are all over the nation. But, uh, if Spokane City could be part of that, it would actually be the biggest city in the nation that holds that distinction. So I don't know what it will involve, like I say, stay tuned. Do you have any questions?
First, thank you. I'm excited about all of this. The second is a new look for, well, yeah, um, partnership, the, have you reached out to Washington Native Plant Society?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because they have, they're starting a trail stewardship or, um, a native plant stewardship program with the city where they're training people to then help tend to native areas. And I don't know if you can be part of that so that the Indian Trail Meadow can be like a destination for them to maintain. And that way it's not just you with your pickaxe. They'll, they'll have volunteers that are specific with native plants that will then be working in different areas.
Yes, and, and I have worked with them, they, uh, we have a relation with, relationship with them that every April at Native Plants Appreciation Month, they drop over a ton of, um, information to me and then distribute throughout the branches. And that's a conversation that we will continue.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, our next regular meeting is November nineteenth, twenty twenty four at Liberty Park Library, next one. Uh, you have your session post. All right. We are adjourned.